Coffee.
Okay, you should open it.
Yeah, but I'm not going to open it until Gary gets in here.
Don't ask me, I'm not the chair.
You're a busy man. Well, thank you for joining us on January 23rd. And we'll start with a roll call and Gary Schmidt, our county administrator.
Thank you, Chair. First, our staff support today Stephen Madcor, County Council. We welcome back Mary Rathke as clerk to the board. Roll call, Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, first up, I'd like to announce that we will recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Housing Authority for the next item. With that, I'd like to introduce our Housing Authority Commissioner Paul Reynolds.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. I understand you just found out about this meeting a very short time ago.
Twenty minutes ago, yeah.
So we sent a helicopter or what?
Well, I was already at the housing office.
Oh, that's good. Well, thank you for taking the time. And with that, Gary.
Yes, Commissioners, you have a Housing Authority Public Hearing, which is public hearing and approval of Resolution Number 1942 for exemption and authorization to use the Request for Proposals method to obtain a construction manager, general contractor, for their Webster redevelopment project. George Marlton from Procurement will present.
And Stephen McMurtry from the Housing Authority.
Good morning. Are we on?
It's on.
Good morning. So we're here today to discuss with you an exemption process to allow the Housing Authority to use an alternative procurement process to select a general contractor, general manager, general contractor, which is usually called CMGC, through a Request for Proposal process for the Webster redevelopment process, project. Today, Stephen's with me today, so he'll be able to answer any project-specific questions. But today, ideally, we're hoping to ask for an approval of the exemption. So both the LCRB and Oregon statute empower the board to grant exemption to the standard bidding process and authorize the use of an alternative competitive procurement process. We are requesting approval of the use of the Request for Proposal process as an alternative process. So what does that all mean? Standard bidding process is a low-bid price process where we select the vendor with the lowest price. The Request for Proposal process is where we select a vendor based on experience, approach, and price. The RFP process is very commonly used for projects that are more complex or have special conditions like the Webster redevelopment project. In order for the board to authorize alternative processes, it must approve two findings. First, that the exemption is unlikely to encourage favoritism in the awarding of public contracts or substantially diminish competition. And two, awarding of the public improvement contract under this exemption will likely result in substantial cost savings to the agency or to the public. For the first finding regarding competition, the use of the RFP process ensures maximum competition for both general contractors and subcontractors. The contracting opportunity will be published broadly, and there will be special requirements that require the general contractor to conduct specific outreach to minority, women, and emerging small businesses. The second finding is regarding substantial cost savings and benefits. For this type of project, there are a lot of unknowns in a redevelopment project. And it's key to have a contractor onboard during the design to identify those unknowns and to provide alternative design options. This collaboration mitigates schedule impacts, cost overruns, and provides for creative value engineering, which all result in substantial cost savings. Through the RFP process, we'll select a contractor and use the CMGC project delivery method, where the owner will hire the general contractor and provide feedback during the design phase. The benefits of the CMGC method include fostering innovation, mitigating risk, improving design quality, improving cost control, and optimizing the construction schedules. The other benefit of the CMGC method is that the design firm and construction contractor will develop a guaranteed maximum price, or GMP, that ensures that the project is completed within scope, timeline, and budget. For these reasons, I recommend the adoption of the resolution and findings approving the use of the RFP process to select a CMGC contractor for the Webster redevelopment project. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions?
Everyone. Is this a project that a project labor agreement might be apropos?
I want to make sure that I, are we on here? Okay. I want to make sure that I understand project labor agreement. Are you considering, you mean, Davis Bacon wage rates or something along those lines? Is that what you're referring to, Commissioner?
Well, it's an agreement between the contractor, labor union, and us that usually facilitates a project going forward with little or no labor disruptions. And it allows, for instance, the labor unions to be able to have their apprentices onboard and get on-the-ground, hands-on training and experience in their various trades. Just to name a couple of factors.
Yep, yeah. So that is, thank you for that. That is exactly what we're proposing in the RFP, and that's what we're looking for in a relationship with the general contractor. We typically align that, and you may have heard of this terminology before, Section 3, which are conditions from HUD that provide opportunities for low-income housing authority residents or low-income residents to have opportunities, but also highlighting in the CMGC relationship those apprenticeship hours as a priority of ours. It's also incumbent, we'll be using bond resources, as you well know, in the redevelopment of Webster Road, and that is also a high priority of the bond. So yes, we will have agreements like that. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. With that, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Anovia, excuse me. Anovia approved a resolution for exemption and authorization to use the Request for Proposal method to obtain a construction manager, general contractor, for the Webster redevelopment project.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve a resolution for exemption and authorization to use the Request for Proposal method to obtain a construction manager, general contractor, for the Webster redevelopment project. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much, Paul, for taking the time to come in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, I'll announce that the board will adjourn as the Housing Authority Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners for the next item. And we have a presentation.
Yes, next is a presentation, the Rhododendron Community Centennial Celebration Proclamation. Commissioner Humberston will present.
Thank you. Rhododendron Community Centennial Celebration Proclamation. Whereas in 1846, Sam Barlow established the Barlow Trail along the modern-day U.S. Route 26 as an alternative to the treacherous Columbia River portion of the Oregon Trail. And whereas weary travelers along the Barlow Trail once stopped at a wide spot in the road at the western foot of Mount Hood to gather strength for the last stretch of their trip to the Willamette Valley. And whereas in 1905, former Portland Mayor Henry S. Rowe directed the construction of and operated an inn on his parcel of land at that wide spot in the road, naming it the Rhododendron Inn due to the large number of rhododendrons growing in the area. And whereas the community of Rhododendron developed around the inn as a summer resort colony for travelers wishing to enjoy the mountain and forest scenery as well as outdoor recreation. And whereas on January 26th, 1920, the United States Postal Service dedicated a new post office for the area to be named Rhododendron, Oregon. And whereas the unincorporated community of Rhododendron today remains an important part of the mountain communities of Clackamas County and is home to nearly 2,000 Oregonians, be it resolved by the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners in the state of Oregon that we, the members of the Board of County Commissioners, commemorate the centennial anniversary of the dedication of the community of Rhododendron and thank its residences, business owners, and community planners for their century of contributions to Clackamas County and the state of Oregon. Signed this day by the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Ken. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the Rhododendron Community Centennial Celebration by proclamation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the Rhododendron Community Centennial Celebration Proclamation. Any further discussion? I'd like to thank Steve Raper for all the hard work, organizing, getting this done, and presenting this to us today. And I look forward to working with ODOT and Rhododendron folks on improving safety in the Rhododendron area. So thank you very much, Steve, for your hard work. And with that, no further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yeah. They'd like a photo of you guys with Steve.
Okay, photo, all right.
I just want to just say, it's really great when we do these that have an educational element, you know, and some history element to that, so I always get pleasure out of that.
You guys have it signed again, but you can hold it up. I'll get your signatures.
Oh, you look great.
Get my makeup for that.
You look great. Smiles? One more? Just stuck it here. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Commissioner. We'll get you a copy.
Okay.
Thanks for seeing us, Karen.
All right, we're looking forward to it.
And everybody, welcome to the Centennial Celebration Saturday of the Cook Creek Inn. We start at 1:00, and we have a number of presentations. And Representative Anna Williams will be there also talking about the statewide proposition.
All right, with that, we're on to citizen communication. I have Diane Gruber and Les Poole. Please come up, tell us who you are. Diane, you'd be first.
Okay, thank you. I'm Diane Gruber. I'm a 32-year resident of West Lynn, and I've practiced law in Oregon for 34 years. And I'm new to this issue of taxpayers paying attorney fees when a commissioner violates an ethics statute. This makes little sense to me, given the fact that when somebody sues somebody and that plaintiff loses the case, the court sometimes will award attorney fees to the defendant who has, you know, has attorney fees because the plaintiff sued him or her. The court will sometimes award all the attorney fees to be paid and/or some of them paid. That's the court's option. So I'm a little confused, given the fact that, if I understand it correctly, Mr. Bernard's wife, Danielle Cohen, an employee of the county, was facing a disciplinary charge. So Mr. Berman, excuse me, Jim Bernard, I beg your pardon. So Chairman Bernard intervened to protect her and help her, and that was an ethics violation. He copped a plea to this ethics violation. So even Mr. Bernard admits he violated a statute, an ethics statute that all elected officials have to live by. And given that, why are the taxpayers paying $20,000 or plus for his attorney fees? And my main question is, does that mean each commissioner, all five of you, could violate an ethics rule and get $20,000 or more in attorney fees paid for your violation of that ethics rule? And would that be a per fiscal year, $100,000, $20,000 for each of you? It doesn't make a lot of sense why the taxpayers are paying. If Mr. Bernard was found to be innocent, then maybe that sort of makes sense that his attorney fees should be partially paid by taxpayers. But since he was guilty, that makes no sense.
So let me clarify something. My wife Danielle was never up for a disciplinary issue, and I never protected her for doing that. That had nothing to do with that. And I did pay all legal fees.
Well, not according to public record. The taxpayers reimburse you $20-plus thousand.
No, no.
So this week, you did repay the county the entire legal fee bill?
Yeah.
So they fronted it to start with, and then you reimbursed them?
Yeah.
The attorney fees.
Because we had no idea what the legal fees was, and we had an agreement as a commission to pay legal fees. And my agreement was that should I be found totally innocent, I would pay them. The county would pay them all. But I was found guilty of violating two rules, so I accepted that and paid the fee, the legal fees. I have a copy of the check if you'd like to see it.
No, no, sir, that's fine.
Thank you.
Well, the question arises, how did we get here? How did we get here? And how we got here again is that we've elected someone and put our faith in someone, Chair Bernard. And he's let us down again. And we've had another controversy. And as I've said before, and I'll say it today, my name is Les Poole. And it seems that whenever there's a controversy involving the commissioner inside this building, there's one thing you can just about count on. That's Chair Bernard is in the middle of it. And I have a few comments about the policy that I believe was violated. The county has a policy. It's reasonable. In the past, in, clear back even in 2012, when Chair Bernard was the subject of an ethics commission over light rail, the county authorized openly and public a $5,000 limit. And that's been something that I think follows standard practices, and it's reasonable because, at times, our elected officials are subject, they're subject to frivolous attacks. You can assure that in this case, that Cherry Anderson, the county, the elected county treasurer who filed the complaint, was very thorough and very careful, and I imagine very hesitant to do so. And in the end, the outcome was as follows. In October, on October 2nd of 2018, there's an audio that I encourage everyone to listen to. And it's where allegedly all this money was authorized by the former county administrator. I apologize to Mr. Schmidt. He's inherited a lot of things that he's not responsible for. And I want folks to listen to that meeting, where we're told that $5,200 has been run up. It's going to be paid. That was fine. The commission authorized that in this policy session. And we could hear that there were going to be some incidental or a little bit of additional charge. And true to form, Chair Bernard ran up a bill that none of you would run up without some further notice or authorization, and then dumped it on us. And one wonders where the $20,000 was spent. Well, it was spent on what one might call a plea deal. Rather than face that final inevitable guilty finding, which would make him responsible for all of the money, he negotiated a stipulated judgment. I want you all to read that judgment because it makes it very clear that he's admitted to a violation, but technically, he's not guilty. So last week, we heard him up here making all kinds of claims, and we were back to lack of accepting responsibility for your actions. And yes, indeed, you had absolutely no intent and you were completely comfortable with the public paying your way, paying for your mistake. And I'm not so sure it was a mistake. I'm going to conclude with something. According to the article yesterday, what I saw was that the chair claims he wasn't obligated to pay it. I believe he wasn't authorized, based on that October meeting and based on the policy of this county, to run up any sort of amount like that when there was going to be some incidental costs or additional costs. So what I'm saying to you today, folks, is this man, a man we've lost our trust in, copped a plea deal, as the lady before me said, and signed a stipulated judgment that technically means he's really not guilty, and therefore, we get to pay the bill. Is that the kind of judgment that we need in this position? It isn't. It is not. I hope the folks were able to watch the video that I mentioned last week, April 16th, 2015. I mentioned it, and in doing so, during the meeting, when I did mention that particular meeting, I mentioned it because it exposes the real outcome and what really went on in Milwaukee with his property. And while you were under investigation for the ethics complaint, for some reason, the link to that video disappeared. And it wasn't on the website when I spoke last Thursday, and it got reposted Thursday afternoon. So now that it's there, I would hope our perplexed Commissioner Fisher and some of the others in this room would go watch that video and then ask why it was removed or how it disappeared. There is no way. You deserve to remain in office, sir. And you can sit there with that smug smile that you have nothing to say that's going to get you off the hook. The last straw has arrived. This is the last straw, Jim. This is.
Thank you. Thank you for coming today.
You always do.
All right. And just to clarify, I did pay all legal fees. The county did not do it. And it was not a surprise. Actually, they got every invoice as they came in. And the county administrator got the invoices. It was not a surprise. It was a surprise to me, because I didn't see all the invoices. Anyway, yes, Sonia.
I just want to ask Administrator Schmidt if he's aware of a break in our system of what's on the web. Transparency and public trust in government is one of our key priorities. And is this the first that you've heard of it? Or can you give some explanation as to what happened?
No, I'm aware of this. We did a website redesign a few months ago. And in that redesign, some of the older videos of business meetings were inadvertently taken offline. Staff is aware of it. They're putting them back online. It was simply a website redesign transition. There was an error, which we haven't since corrected.
Oh, good.
The timing, just coincidentally, apparently last week, some of those changes were made.
So we can thank Les for bringing that to our attention. Thank you, Les.
Les, no.
Given the gravity, can I say something?
Okay.
The videos prior to, I believe, 2014 are all missing. I'm discussing the fact that one video disappears specifically that incriminates you and holds you accountable for your conduct. I apologize for, I'm out of order here, but this is serious business, and the look on your face is one of defiance and dismissive arrogance.
All right, Paul?
I just wanted to just get clarification. Now that it's been pointed out about this, was all of 2015 business meetings wiped? Or inadvertently, not wiped, but was it all missing? Or was just this one meeting of 2015?
I am unaware of a single date missing. So I'll say this, Commissioners, you don't direct staff. I direct staff. There was no Commissioners directed staff to remove a video. There is a transition in that, like, there's a transition in our website redesign where videos, Commissioners, you asked, like, two, four years ago, as the longest-serving commissioner on this commission, we would have videos online from when that commissioner started. So Chair Bernard, that's you, from 2009. So we'd have videos online since 2009. In the website transition, the videos were taken off the page, except for the last two or three years. So we're putting them back online. That is something I was not aware of until just last week. In fact, Commissioner Savis, you raised that to my attention, so.
Yes, I just wanted to just get that out there, that the last time I checked, and when I brought this to staff's attention a couple few times, it was 2011, 2012, and 2013 that I recollect were missing. But I didn't see anything, I didn't know of anything in 2014 or 15. That looked to be complete, but I never scanned, because it's, again, difficult. I'm having difficulty with the new website, as I shared with you. That is not as clear or accessible as it once was. And that's when I raised that. But I was not aware of anything in 2014, 15, and to present, being missing.
And just to be clear, Martha's the longest-serving commissioner, even though she did leave. Even though I love to claim that I am the senior commissioner.
Well, thank you, Commissioner, and it is an honor to serve with you. You are a kind, decent man, and I'm grateful you're our chair. And my hope is that you return as our chair. And our job here is not to judge one another because, God knows, I've made plenty of mistakes in my life. And, oh, well. Whether mistake or not, we, I think every member of this board is behind you and supports you and really thinks you're a great guy. So, there you go.
Well, mostly, you know, I really apologize to you guys who are having to put you through this again. I do, you know, I, one thing about, I really believe that leaders sometimes have to go out ahead of things, and sometimes we get in trouble for it. And I did that, and, you know, there's probably no one out there in this planet who's not said something or sent an email or a text message that regrets seconds later that they did it. Even though the internet nets made our lives so much easier. All right, with that, we'll move on to public hearing. And Gary, what's up?
Yes, you have a public hearing, approval of a resolution adopting mass gathering application fees and declaring an emergency. Stephen Madcor, County Council, will present.
Good morning, Commissioner Stephen Madcor, County Council. What you have before you is a proposed resolution for a public hearing, which would result in the adoption of a new fee that the county would impose on applications for mass gatherings. We presently do not have such an application fee. This fee that is being proposed, $5,000 or $2 per head, is provided for by recent state legislation, which empowers counties and local municipalities to impose that fee. So we're just entirely in line with what state law provides for. We are not adopting any mass gathering ordinance. We are relying on existing state law for that, which provides for law enforcement, medical health, health and safety provisions, notice, and things along those lines. So we're going to rely on state law for that. But to impose this fee, we have to do it locally. And we do it by way of Appendix A in our code itself, and it's done in one reading by way of resolution. And this fee would be continuous in duration until such time as the state were to provide for a different fee. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, Paul, you have a question?
I do, I do. So you touched on part of it, but I'm wondering why we cannot have two hearings, a first and second reading? And why are we choosing to do, is there something urgent that we have to actually not have a second hearing?
I will say, Commissioners, you are the boss. So if you would like a second hearing, you could certainly do it. But our practice has been to adopt fees and fines by way of resolution with one public hearing. So if you wanted a second one, we certainly could do that. We'd be available for that. We are declaring an emergency on this one, or recommending that an emergency be declared, as we do with all fines and fees, just so it's enforced when the board signs it. And otherwise, it would be 90 days, and so that would take us into April. You could do that as well. But typically, we do. You could do that as well, but typically, we do an emergency for such adoptions.
Well, the reason I would ask my colleagues to have a process that has two hearings is because I, my recollection, when we had the mass gathering discussions, that a number of people who do a lot of nonprofit kind of gatherings, which might be subject to that, would now be subject to a fee, which may be more than, I mean, I understand $2 a head or $5,000. That could be, that could severely have an impact. So therefore, I asked my colleagues to keep the hearing and the record open and have a second hearing.
And again.
Is that a different process altogether?
We have no opposition to that. We haven't heard any opposition from anybody. In fact, I will say that the state law for mass gatherings imposes quite an obligation upon county staff, and it's been this Board's direction to have cost recovery at all opportunities available. And this is unlikely, actually, to even recover actual county staff time if it is a bona fide mass gathering, because you have to coordinate with state and local actors and officials to review and approve these processes.
Yeah, I understand that, but, you know, I guess, I suppose that that's a reality to some degree. But if we're not hiring new staff, we're not incurring any overtime, if, and I don't know that, then, then that staff timer cost is not as significant if, if indeed, we did have to hire or pay overtime. So I guess if there's a law enforcement element, there's overtime involved, then that would help, help me better understand and support that, so. So that's why I think having the record open for any input, because I do recall some very good, very, very good citizens and causes in which some people felt they may be subject to that, to that mass gathering ordinance now, and now a fine. So that's my request before the, for the Commission. And I know that we don't have a motion at this point, but I would move that we, I'll make the motion. I move.
If I make a public hearing, so.
Okay. But we haven't opened the public hearing yet. But, okay, go ahead. I'll, but I'm going to ask for, I'll be asking for that.
So Ken?
So I just want to make sure I understand clearly the fee structure. If you had, say, 100 people, that would be 200, yeah, $200.
That is correct. It would be 200 bucks. It's $2, $2 per head.
And it goes up based at $2 a head until you hit $5,000, which would be the max, and that would be for a very large gathering.
Well, 5,000 or $2 per head. If you had 20,000 people, it would be 40,000 potentially.
Whatever the highest.
Yeah, yeah.
That wasn't, that's not clear in the backup literature, but thank you for clarifying that.
It is, I think it's probably discretionary, too. That's where our language just mimics the state law. Also, 200 people wouldn't trigger mass gathering either.
I was, that was my next question, because I understood from our, our code that we did have differential sizes that aren't considered math, ba-dee-ba-dee, mass gatherings.
Commissioner, we have not adopted anything in our code yet, because the legislature changed two components of mass gathering statute, which seems to be sufficient to provide the county with the oversight and the authority it would need. If we, our adoption would be almost mimicking state law. So we decided at this juncture to just rely on state law as it exists with the amendments, but to adopt the fee structure, because we currently do not have that. But we did have some mass gathering proposed ordinance amendments in front of the Commission, which have not progressed to the first or second reading yet. So we're relying on state law to regulate mass gatherings within Clackamas County.
Okay. Thank you for answering the questions.
And what you could do, if you did decide to proceed, you could say, read this resolution, title only, and then we would have a second public hearing, which would have to be 13 days from now, and Mary would have to schedule that, because you would have to announce during today's session what that date was on the second reading of the resolution itself. And during that time period, we could certainly do outreach with planning or law enforcement, whoever else the Commission directed us to engage with.
Is there, is there anything on the agenda that we are aware of vis-à-vis mass gatherings in the very near future?
Yes. Fairly near future.
The only thing I am aware of, Commissioner, is that there might be a anniversary of the Vortex event up at MacGyver Park that would be a, likely be a mass gathering.
And when is that?
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know when it was. It was during, my understanding of it was.
No, no, I mean, I mean, will it be this year and when?
But yes, it's supposed to be anniversary of the, I think it was a Republican or Democrat National Convention, like 40 years ago or something.
It was the American Legion.
American Legion, okay. What year, Commissioner? Do you know, Chair?
My question's prospectively, when, is it like in August? Is it September?
I think likely June, July, or August.
Okay, so we have time.
Yeah.
That was my concern.
That's my point. We have time. And, and so my question goes back to, I do recall several years ago, having a discussion on mass gathering, and I've rarely absent, but I have missed a meeting here and there. Did I miss a meeting in between? Did we have a discussion, a work session on this?
It was brought up at issues a week ago, and you, Commissioners, gave the head nod to go forward.
Okay, that was Tuesday. I had to leave. Okay, I'm sorry. So I was absent for that.
All right, so, you know, what I'd be interested in doing is first reading, but I'd like to come back maybe with a schedule of fees, because 100 people, 200 people are going to, the state allows us to set a fee scale, right?
You could go lower if you wanted to. You could not go higher.
No, I mean, let's say you have 100 people showing, we don't think that we should charge anything. We could probably set a scale of zero per head up to 200 people.
I would have to refer to state statute. I thought the number might have been 2,500 that triggers the mass gathering. So 200 is not even going to trigger a mass gathering.
So it doesn't, when you said $2 a head and you asked about 100 people, the $2 a head doesn't apply, because it's not 2,500 people. That was my understanding.
It sounds like we might need a little more information before we go forward.
Yeah, so shall we do first reading? And, well, first, I'll open the public hearing. We'll see if anyone's here to testify on this matter, and, okay? And then we'll decide. I'll open the public hearing, ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. You need to fill out a card, but come on up.
My name's Bill Osborne, and I hadn't heard about this until just now, and it, it sounds pretty scary, especially with the emergency clause in there. I know a lot of things are done politically with the emergency clause, and it cuts out the, what is it, the referendum process of we, the people. And so, anything you guys would consider as an emergency, I would hope would be a dire emergency, not something like this. Now, the 2,500 people triggering this, that sounds a little better than when you guys started the conversation. I organize solve cleanups at High Rocks and other areas around here, and I have a cleanup coming up on Earth Day, which is a combined cleanup, where there's going to be, hopefully, thousands of people through the state out picking up trash along the river and the shoreline. And I certainly would hate to have to pay some fee. I also would caution, I know this state, and right now, we have a, our political system, I believe, is broken. We have essentially kind of like gang warfare again, with two parties fighting against each other. I compare it a lot to the Crips and the Bloods. It's the, it's the red and the blue fighting all the way up to the Capitol of the country, not just the state. And so I find a lot of these things come out that are targeted to benefit one political party versus another. And I would certainly remind all of you of the Constitution of the U.S. In fact, just to, so I get it, word for word here. The First Amendment, "Congress shall make no law respecting and establishing a religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech or the press." And this is where it kicks in. "Or the right of the people to peaceably assemble to petition government a redress of grievances." So I think like if these groups were politically motivated and they had a grievance against government, charging them a fee would potentially violate their First Amendment rights. And of course, attorneys love areas like that, because they make money on both sides. As a taxpayer, I don't want to see the county get in a battle that's going to cost the taxpayers tens of thousands of dollars over a law that I would say definitely, and respectfully, at least you guys did say you need to look into this more. Something that I don't think there's enough information on to move ahead right now. So my hope is that at the end of today, the decision that's made, that you guys kick this down the road a little bit, do a little more research into it, and let the people have a little more time to gather up and share their inputs, so.
Thanks. I think that I'd be interested in perhaps, we could do the first reading. One thing I think is, first, it doesn't kick in until there's a certain size and then duration. It's not, I mean, it's overnight and stuff like that. I think the duration matters, but it's been a little while. It might be worthwhile just to get some clarification. I'd be fine just tabling this for now and coming back at, you know, I've been wanting to do this for a long time, by the way, because we had a couple of situations that were out of control. And one was a big soccer tournament in the middle of an area, and we had huge traffic problems, and we didn't know about it. And this way, at least we know about it and we can manage it. And the sheriff had a lot of problems controlling that. So I'd be interested in maybe tabling this today and bringing it back, maybe, when can we get it on a policy session?
Oh, policy session is.
Well, just to get an update.
As soon as you'd like to do that. If I may, and I thank Dan Johnson, your DTD Director, for just texting me, you could also choose to have a waiver or an exception process, whereas a Board, you would choose to waive a fee if you chose. So that can be an exception route for you as well, if you wanted to consider that. But we can add this to a policy session anytime you'd like.
All right, so I've got, I think Paul was lit up first, and then we'll go to Ken. Paul?
Yeah, so I, if the, I don't know if the hearing's still open, so I don't know if it's appropriate. So just point, point of order. I hate to have a comment or question. So is the hearing still open?
Are you, are you done?
I, I think I'm done here for now.
Okay, thank you.
I would just add, maybe, hopefully, that when you guys do vote on it, yeah, there is more details and things are.
Does anyone else want to testify?
Thank you.
Terry, please introduce yourself.
Terry Emert, Emert International. Yes, I had some concerns with the mass gathering, because as it started off, we were talking smaller numbers, but being in business and having shopping centers and things like this, for example, we do a summer party, we have 800 to 900 people. But maybe there should be a stipulation that over such a gathering requires onsite enforcement, security furnished by the person putting on the event. But to have a permit, we just opened a shopping center last year in Portland, and we had over 10,000 people opening day, and they would probably want to call that a mass gathering. But even the city of Portland didn't require us to have a permit, because it's a business and a grand opening. And I think when you get into something saying any gathering, a certain amount of people, I mean, it's got to be the intent. And I can understand where we're coming from when it comes to MacGyver Park and a bunch of crazy stuff going on. But I don't think for a business or professional, or for a celebration, whatever it be, for religious purposes, political purposes, that there should have to be a mass gathering permit.
I think, I think it has to do with duration. I mean, if you had a mall, you had a grand opening, you had 10, 20,000 people, you're not going to go overnight, and you're not going to have bands playing all night long. You're going to end it at some time.
Well, it didn't say that.
Yeah, I know. That, that's because we don't have it before us, but I think I remember that. We'll look at that and move forward under you, you know, I.
Okay. Any questions?
Any questions?
All right. Thank you.
All right, so.
Paul, still? Yeah. I just want a question. So just for sake of clarity for anyone who's watching, what is the threshold that determines, what's the number of people that determines a mass gathering?
I'm not entirely sure offhand. The point is, you're not adopting anything related to regulating mass gatherings, other than the consideration of a application fee. State law currently regulates mass gatherings. So whatever folks, and we've had these issues in the past where they tried to have the rave event up at the mountain, we resorted to state law, saying these folks have not applied for anything, and it would trigger the state law. So this isn't anything that we would be imposing, the county. This is existing state law which regulates mass gatherings. And certainly, we could provide you with the duration, the numbers, and the regulations that need to be complied with in order to get county approval for a mass gathering. We'd be happy to do that.
Right. I think there's enough good questions that have been asked here today to, to bring this back for a policy session. Based on the comments I heard, my other input on this right now is that I think an idea of a waiver is a good idea if, I'm going to qualify this, if there is clear criteria, because I don't think that we, we have discretion. I think there ought to be some specific criteria, so that it doesn't get a political decision on what to waive, and, and I'm concerned about that. I had to flashback to my, the first meeting of the year, when I brought up the, I think it was the first meeting of the year, I brought up the nonpartisan resolution. I don't want to see political decisions being made, and, and also have fairness in there, so that if we're waiving it for one, that somehow it's, it's very clear what can be waived and what can't be waived. So that, that would be a concern I would have.
That's not a decision we make.
Well, that's my, well, whoever makes the decision, if we, if we implore, employ a waiver, and we, I think that we have a responsibility to put the criteria in there as well.
Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What struck me initially is a rather innocuous piece of, of work by you and your staff. Obviously has some other impacts that maybe we weren't aware of. So I'm okay with waiting, getting a little more information. More particularly, I want to know how applying this would impact different-sized groups, et cetera. Mr. Emert made a good point, is, is that considered a mass gathering when you have a grand opening of a business and 10,000 people show up? Do we want to look at exclusions? I think we just need to have a little more information, so that we have a real sense of, of the impact of applying this. I think there is a place for it, especially using the MacGyver Park issue of a three-day celebration and bands and the kind of thing that could be a control problem. It does make some sense there. But the law of unintended consequences, I guess, is what I'd say I want to be careful of, so that we're not impacting something that we don't want to impact. So I'd like a little more information. I'm willing to wait a little bit to, to get that information.
We could do that.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll, did I close? We'll close the public hearing and table this for, after a policy session. By the way, I just was looking at Marion County. So Marion County does not require a, it does require a permit to have a small event. They don't charge anything. That's 751 people to 3,000. And you have to apply three months ahead. Anything smaller than that, there is no application. And they put on a lot more events than we do, I know that. Anyway, so it's something, we'll get a session on it very quickly.
So is it appropriate to make a motion to do that? So I move to table?
Second.
It is. Any further discussion? Then move to, motion to table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing not, motion carries. All right. Thank you, Stephen. The next item on the agenda is the consent, consent agenda. I'd ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of a revenue contract and, revenue contract and business associate agreement with Care Oregon for behavioral health services. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas Community College for the House Bill 2017 State Transportation Improvement Fund, Regional Coordination Program Funds for expansion of the Clackamas Community College Express Shuttle. Under Finance, authorization to purchase a Freightliner loader truck from McCoy Freightliner of Portland for the Department of Transportation and Development. Under Elected Officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes, and approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office and the Department of Homeland Security, Immigration and Code Custom Enforcement, for the use of Public Safety Training Center, the Bowman Training Complex. Under Disaster Management, approval, approval of an intergovernmental. Under Disaster Management, approval, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the State of Oregon, Oregon State Police, and Clackamas County for the Medical Examiner's Office Building Agreement. Under Technology Services, approval of a service-level agreement between Clackamas Broadband Exchange and Allstream Business US for fiber connection, and approval for a service-level agreement, Amendment Number One, between Clackamas Broadband Exchange and Summit Learning Charter for fiber connections. And under Community Corrections, approval to apply for a grant award from the Bureau of Justice, Center for Disease Control and Prevention for the Building Bridges Program. And that concludes today's consent agenda.
I'd also like to mention that there were three items removed from the consent agenda, both pertaining to the sheriff's office, Mountain Rescue, Mountain Wave, Pacific Northwest Search and Rescue for a future policy session. Appreciate Paul, you asking to remove those. And with that, I'll entertain a motion. Sonya, question?
Oh, no, I just wanted to mention that also at our last issue session, when we talked about the agenda, we talked about the contract with CARE Oregon for $3.5 million, and I'd asked some questions. I did just want to share with my colleagues that I met with Mary Rumbaugh and was able to get some information about what this funds, and it really takes care of some of our most challenged and most vulnerable residents in Clackamas County that struggle with significant mental health issues. And one story that she shared with me just to talk about the impact was with a nine-year-old. So this is also children and adults. Some of the adults are those that are leaving the Oregon State Hospital, some are in the community, and some are children. But just for an example, a family with a nine-year-old child with significant mental health issues that really couldn't find a placement through Department of Human Services. And so our intensive case managers, case management staff met with and provided really tailored strategy and support, and the child was eventually able to come home and live with the family. And it's very heartwarming and important. So, so much work that we do happens through this consent agenda. I just couldn't let this moment go by without some sharing about what this all means for the people we care so much about in Clackamas County.
Thank you for doing that. Appreciate it. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
We moved in second now. We approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. And with that, where do the county administrator updates?
Yes, commissioners, I'd love to share with you some ongoing good news, things our county staff are doing to help serve the public of Clackamas County. First, the Carley Creek Water Quality Facility. Recently, two otters were spotted. You may ask, why is that good news? Well, it is good news because that is one of the priorities of this project, is to provide habitat for wildlife. Since December 2018, the Carley Creek Facility has filtered harmful pollutants out of stormwater runoff from surrounding industrial properties before it reaches the Clackamas River, which is the drinking water source for over 400,000 people in Clackamas County. For seven years, Water Environment Services has restored 1,700 feet of creek, installed pipe systems, created wetland basins, reshaped soil, and planted 70,000 native plants to capture pollutants. Eighty-three wood structures were also installed to provide habitat protection for wildlife. So we welcome those two otters to our Carley Creek area and what that acknowledges for our wildlife habitat protection. Next, our Health Centers Division had an unofficial opening of its Gladstone Dental Clinic earlier this month. Staff now there provides comprehensive dental care, including checkups, cleanings, x-rays, and fillings for babies and young people up to 18 years old. And already, our staff has gotten kudos since they opened two weeks ago. On the first day, our providers saw three young siblings. One of the children already had a different dental provider. After seeing how the providers interacted with her siblings, she told her mom, I want to come here for my dental work, too. So we thank the staff at the Gladstone Clinic to all the great work they do in helping that young person see she wanted to be served by our outstanding staff there at the clinic. So the grand opening celebration of the Gladstone Dental Clinic will be in March, and we'll make sure you're all invited to that. Finally, I would like to remind you and the public that next Thursday's business meeting, January 30th, will be an evening business meeting. It is the fifth Thursday of the month, and that's when you agree to have evening business meetings. So the January 30th business meeting will be at 6:00 PM here in this room. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. I have a West Advisory Meeting that same night. Might have to fix something there.
We will work that out.
Maybe it's a short meeting, though. I don't know. No? Okay. All right.
Some rescheduling beginning.
Yeah. All right. With that, we'll start with Martha.
Okay, well, I have, I'm going to try and be fast, but I've got a few things to talk about today. So I'm going to ask Mary to pull up the National Association of Counties website for us, because I want to talk a little bit about the National Association of Counties, and I'd like folks to have an opportunity to actually look it up and see what it does, because Clackamas County has been a proud member of NACO for 45 years. It was founded in 1935, and its focus and purpose is to strengthen America's counties through serving nearly 40,000 county-elected officials and 3.6 million county employees across the United States. And its priorities are to advocate for county priorities, promote exemplary county policies, nurture leadership skills, optimize county and taxpayer resources, and enrich the public's understanding of county government. NACO, and I know that all previous commissioners I've worked with have all attended NACO legislative workshops, and also the summer workshops that they offer to us, because what it does, it benefits all of us to learn about innovative programs and projects that have worked for other counties across the country. And as I continue to talk about this, next week, I'll be able to talk a little bit about the number of awards this county has received, and how we have influenced not just our policies here in Clackamas County, but through the years, we have been an innovator that has been nationally recognized. The other benefit is that it's a networking opportunity, so we can learn and have friends in other counties across the United States of America. So if we have issues that we want to get a different perspective on, we have a resource that we can talk directly to one another. One of the things I want to talk about, too, is the toolkits that NACO supplies, the National Association supplies to all counties, and in particular, I'm going to hold one up, and this is NACO's Affordable Housing Toolkit for counties. And as many folks know, it is one of our priorities in the state and in our county to really, you know, look at these tools and attempt to make sure that we have the inventory we need for, you know, for making sure people are housed. And so essentially, it gives us lots of information, not the least of which is the county role in housing affordability. So it's very helpful. It helps counties address their role in affordable housing, opportunities in development, and it also outlines strategies, that's the most critical thing, including funding, financing solutions, planning and zoning strategies, federal resources. And they also provide us with a lot of research to develop these kinds of tools that are accessible to all of us for getting information. Tools about health, resiliency, human services, awards programs, health, everything that we need, we actually can get research data that not only reflects our county but other counties across the United States. So I think it is an invaluable resource, not only for me but for all my colleagues, and I would invite people to take a look at the organization at naco.org. So, and so every week, I'll be talking a little bit about what we, what NACO has to offer us. The other thing I wanted to mention is that last night was our first meeting of the Metropolitan Policy Advisory Council. I want to thank my colleagues who are allowing me to be reappointed to that board. We typically meet twice per month, and last night, we had our first meeting, and it was a particularly good one. In October, just to give you some context, we were briefed on the Growth Concept 2040 Refresh and Planning for Our Future Economy Project. Last night's meeting actually was a first in a series that we're going to be looking at of special panelists, and it featured guest speakers exploring approaches to planning and investment to respond to transitions, new thinking, and key changes in the regional economy. So what does that really mean? That means we heard from Central Cultural, from downtown Cornelius Cultural District, Fourth Plane Forward from Vancouver, Washington, the Rosewood Initiative, Neighborhood Prosperity Initiative, and then the Native American Youth and Family Center, which is on 42nd Avenue and Cully. So what we're really trying to do is support people-centered, place-based development, and to look at these approaches and to get the tools to do this in our own areas. In particular, we had a wonderful presenter as well. Her name is Carol R. Naughton, and she is the president of Purpose Built Communities. And she gave a great discussion, great presentation about what we're, what they've been doing in Atlanta to really do purpose-based development, and it actually lifts people out of poverty, helps them in education systems, really, you know, eliminates, helps to eliminate houselessness. So I think it's a really good thing for Metro to be looking at, and I'm glad I'm able to attend those meetings. All right, I'm going to go to the word of the week, real quick, if I can find it somewhere. Okay. I'm going to hand arts and culture over to Sonya to, actually, if she doesn't mind, Commissioner Fisher, but I didn't want to give this up because this is a great word. Okay, witter shins. It's an adverb. It's Scottish. In a left-handed wrong or contrary direction. This is another way to say something is moving counterclockwise, or something is moving in the wrong direction. It is a much more fun way to say counterclockwise. Famous quote, "The coracle whirls around clockwise, then witter shins." So I kind of like that one. I'm going to use that. All right, so I'm going to pass this along to anyone that wants to, maybe Commissioner Fisher wouldn't mind doing arts and culture.
I would like to comment that left-handed is not necessarily the wrong direction.
Oh, it's not. I have a left-handed brother, and I have a son that's ambidextrous. She won't get any argument from me. All right. Who's next?
Oh, so next would be Ken.
Thank you. Number of things this week to mention. As you know, Souders Timber has signed to establish a cross-laminated timber processing facility in Estacada. That has stimulated additional business interest in the area. I can't share a lot about that right now, but this is very, very encouraging in terms of our initiative there. Some housing numbers for people out there who don't always follow everything that we do. We all know that there is a great housing need, but just to give you some ideas, or the public some ideas of what's already being done. Nineteen veterans, of course, have been moved out of the veterans' pods and into permanent supporting housing. Clayton Moore Commons, 24 units of low-income veterans housing for families are open and operating and occupied. 214 units at Audi Road are under construction and hopefully will open soon. And we will be doing, obviously, from what you heard today, the remodeling at the project on 32nd Street in Milwaukee and adding 400 additional units there. So we are well on our way to accomplishing our goals of getting more people under roofs and taking care of appropriately. Commissioner Bernard and I attended the open, the Oregon Housing Summit last week in Salem, and I'll let him speak to that in the future. Tourism Department, their focus this year is going to be on river tourism and encouraging and improving that, particularly in Clackamas County, and they're looking at some of the cities in Clackamas County and how that intersection with the cities in Clackamas County and the rivers can be improved and get more tourism in our little local cities. The Fair Board, as I mentioned earlier this week, has done their master plan, their business plan, and their audit so far. The Oregon Fair Board Association met in Salem, and the association, along with AOC, is working on an application to the state for $900,000 to increase the state allocation to local fairs throughout the state, plus a $250,000 grant that would allow for a complete evaluation of the capital needs in all of the fairs in the state. Virtually every county is on board with this, and hopefully, we will at least get the grant so that we can, in the long session, make a pitch for assistance on the capital needs that many of our county fairs have. And aside to that was a quote from a judge in one of our rural communities who commented that never in his courtroom has he had a kid who participated in FFA or 4H, which speaks a lot to what our rural communities have at those fairs and how important that is to those communities. As I'm sure many are aware, there was an oversight in the state budget last year, and our correction, our community corrections budget was underfunded. Again, universally at AOC, there is a request to increase that funding. It costs about 12, we're allocated $12.067 per resident for our community corrections program. The cost now is about $14.24 statewide. That was about a $50 million shortfall in community corrections. Locally, that, if that is not fixed, we could lose seven deputies and close the program. We do not want that to happen. They have an exceptionally good record at, in rehabilitation, significantly better than at the state level, and the cost at the state level in a state prison is $115 a day. So that is also significant savings with minimal risk to the public. We want to make sure that that gets funded. As I already mentioned, veterans, 19 veterans have been placed in supportive housing, and we've increased the number of units at the Veterans Village. With our most recent harvest plan, there was some interest by members of the community to look at the harvesting techniques that we are using, and I've encouraged them to meet with our Forest Advisory Board and have some discussions with those folks there to see what adjustments we might be able to make and improve our harvesting techniques as much as possible. And finally, I attended the French Prairie Consortium, and their focus this year, again, is on river tourism. There are some concerns about boat damage in the Newburgh Pool area. They're hoping to make some improvements on that. And that is it for the moment. I do have the dog. So here we go. Hello, this is lovable guy, this lovable guy's name is Roger. He's looking for a home that will make him part of their family forever. He is a gentle soul that would love to keep you company and lay by your feet while you watch TV at night. If you're looking for a friendly dog that would complete your family, come and check out Roger. For more information about Roger or other adoptable dogs, please contact Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you. Sonya?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start with arts and culture. Thank you, Commissioner Schrader, for this opportunity. Arts and culture activities in the county. The Lakewood Theater is presenting Wait Until Dark. Susan, a blind woman, lives with her husband Sam in a basement apartment. While away on business, Sam unknowingly snuggles a peculiar doll into the home after a trip to Philadelphia. But when the doll goes missing, a woman is murdered, and a mystery begins to unravel that leaves Susan tangled up in the ruthless con man. A battle of wits ensues, and the light becomes dark as the tables are turned in a deadly game of cat and mouse, all leading to a jump out of your seat finish. Also, in arts and cultures, the History on Fire Ignite Talks, Sunday, January 26, 2:00 PM, at Willamette Ale and Cider House. This event features a series of brief topics and accompanying slides. The Ignite will include some exciting local talent and historians. The Westland Historical Society's annual meeting will focus immediately, will follow immediately, at which time, the new board of directors will be elected. So thank you for allowing me to share that, arts and culture. And on to my commissioner communication. I wanted to share one day this last week, which was Monday, Martin Luther King Day, where Commissioner Schrader and I were honored and privileged to attend the day of service for Kaiser Permanente. The workers for Kaiser gather, and what they were doing on that day is off of, it's near Kenton area, off of kind of Lombard, there is some new housing being built for transition projects, of which the Kaiser Permanente employees and friends and people from the community were paying... from the community were painting and working to improve and enhance this new housing that was being built. It was modular housing, which means that the housing pieces are built off-site, brought to the site, and constructed there. That saves tremendous time and construction costs because of the efficiency of that. So in all of that awareness, we got to learn about what Transition Projects was doing for housing. But also, so important was a gathering, and we can go ahead and do the other pictures, too. The gathering of elected officials and leaders from around the region to celebrate Kaiser Permanente giving $5.1 million to, for seniors who are homeless. So all of the elected leaders from the region, Mayor Wheeler, Chair Kefory, and Pam Trees from Washington County, also spoke. But I wanted to share what my, my comments were during, during this time. So first of all, to be there, and I'm sure Commissioner Schrader can attest to this, it was quite overwhelming to see all of the collaborative partners that were in the room, because it spanned from all of the region, from people that work in the field to the nonprofit sector, to leaders, to just concerned citizens that were there. And it really brought home the importance and the purpose and of collaboration, and how significant that is. But what pressed on my heart when I, before I spoke, when you think about seniors who are homeless, in April of 2017, I was a baby, brand-new commissioner, and I'm sure you all remember this day, when Elaine, who was 91 years old at the time, shared with us her story. And she really struggled. Her rent was raised, and she could not afford her rent. She tried to stay with various people as, you know, couch-surf, like so many people do, and that became too challenging for her. So she, as you recall, she went and lived in her van. What impressed upon me during her testimony was how articulately she shared the indignity of not knowing where she was going to use the restroom. And at that time, she had worked with our staff, who connected her with Catholic charities, who connected her with housing, where she was then housed with five women, and she had her own room, her own bed, a place to take a bath, and a place to use the restroom. Just the very poignant expression of her testimony was carried on in my, in my heart every day as a county commissioner. So when I see the health community through the Regional Supporting Housing Impact Fund, which is a new effort, and this includes our health partners such as OHSU, and Kaiser, and Providence, and Legacy, Central City Concern, Care Oregon, our Health Share, which is our coordinated care organization, and many other partners, when I see the whole community coming together to say, "It's not okay. It's not okay that our seniors are living on the street." So in context, big picture, in our community, in two, year 2011, percent of our population was over 65. In 2016, that rose to 18%. In 2025, that is going to, is expected to be 21%. So in a quarter of a century, our over-65 population is, has, will, is expected to double. When you couple that with 42% of Americans have not been saving for retirement, we have some serious challenges, because we all know that social security check is not going to cover the rising costs of rent for people and the cost just to live. So we have some serious challenges ahead. On Monday, we all know that it was Martin Luther King Day. One of the quotes that he has said was, "The arc of justice is long. The moral arc of justice is long, but it bends towards justice." I spent a lot of time thinking about that quote, because I kind of just don't believe that it just kind of happens, that things get better just because of this self-determined arc to justice. So I did some research on that quote, and it actually came from a minister from a couple hundred years ago that talked about how people coming together work to make things better. And I really think that's true. And when it comes to housing and people who are homeless, and we look at the people that are out there that simply cannot afford to live in this market, we can say, "That's something that we can all, as a community, through our business community and our religious sector and our government, come together and work to solve this problem." Because it's really by doing it together that we are going to be able to focus on that. So I was quite inspired by Martin Luther King Day on Monday.
Great, thank you. Paul?
Well, this is not rehearsed, but it just seems just coincidental, apropos futuitous, that this is the topic for today. But I actually had a, wanted to talk about senior citizens as well. And I actually happen to have a chart. I don't know which one's more outdated, but it's similar to the, the numbers that Commissioner Fisher just cited. And, and, and it's got a lean or a bend here, more on the transportation and the housing side and so forth. So what I wanted to share was that, some numbers here, and I, again, I don't know whose numbers are more recent, but this one's got numbers as late as 2017. But the forecast was that from the year 2000 to 2025, that the senior population in Clackamas County would grow from about 37,000 to almost 100,000, 96, 97,000 people. So that's a significant growth in senior population, and also the percentage proportion in Clackamas County would grow. And so that's significant. Clackamas County in 2010 already had, in the metro region, the highest proportion population of senior citizens in, of the three, of the three counties. So we already have a strong retirement community base, and in the Oak Grove area, Jenny's Lodge area, we have a lot of retirement facilities and businesses there that, that house a number of senior citizens. So as that relates to transportation, particularly, is that when I first got involved 23 years ago in, in my area, it wasn't very long before I was on a transportation committee, and we recognized not only that demographic, but how do we serve that demographic, and why, why and how those folks who have very little resources need good transportation and safe transportation. And the Oak Grove area, for those of you who don't know, or Jenny's Lodge area, not unlike maybe Lake Oswego and West Lynn, and Oregon City to some degree, is a lot of hills, a lot of dark streets, no sidewalks, no, no safe way that even children or even adults can actually safely pass. So a recommendation was, in many committees, in recognition that this, our, this community, that community had asked for a local shuttle or a local jetty to transport people around because of this circumstance. Well, it's been over 20 years, and I've been ringing the bell. I've been repeating that. I've been raising added issues. We got more money because of House Bill 2017 for transportation, for transit particularly. And we have not had that call answered. It just goes, it seems to fall on deaf ears. So I really think that we, as a commission, ought to have some kind of a work session and/or some kind of an effort, a stronger effort. I was thinking about raising a C4 again, raised a C4 before. But these numbers are striking. And a concern came out of our community recently from one of our, one of our more prominent people in the area, that if light rail is going to be looked at in, in the McLaughlin area with this T-2020 measure, and it's going to be studied, that the concern about more displacement and more people and higher rents going up is going to cause more hardship, and to this population particularly, that we can't really afford. And I mentioned here a week ago or so about fragile communities. And because of the, the population, I'm very concerned that these fragile populations, low income, whether they're communities of color, or whether they are literally, the elderly population are going to be more impacted. And to even further that discussion, what a lot of people don't know is that we didn't, the, the projects or the monies we asked for to be included in this package, this T-2020 package, are not necessarily projects that, that are included in the package today, or to the tune of the dollars to adequately fund those projects. And shuttles are being left off, and I want to bring that to everyone's attention. The, the concept of, which even mentioned here recently, coming out of, out of the metro area, is that potentially closing lanes on McLaughlin Boulevard, actually shutting a lane down, similarly what they're doing all around the region, or want to do all around the region. So those are things that we don't have any input on, and yet, the state owns the road, county, the county owns the roads, the cities own the roads, and yet, this is being imposed upon us. And I just think that we ought to have more say and find out what, what it is that they have plans for, whether it's this community along McLaughlin, that they got $280 million they want to do something with, but we don't know, or it's other areas where we need transit or shuttles that aren't getting the attention either. It seems to me that if it's, they don't want to spend money on a service, they can actually at least spend money on buying some buses or shuttles that would actually do the work and donate them, or provide them to some of the local transit agencies for that service. But I, I just have a hard time with us not really taking the stand we ought to take. And I raised what happened in Tigard, when the mayor of Tigard found out that they wanted to close a lane on, on a Barber Boulevard. He stood up, and his council stood up and stood behind him and said, "No." And I don't know, you know, I haven't, I can't put my, you know, I don't know that whether this is just, again, part of the mystery of what the $280 million is going for, but we don't know what that $280 million is going to be assigned to. And I hope it's not that. I don't know if Chair Bernard has any, any further information, but I did want to cite, I did want to cite, again, the local transit issue, possible lane removal, and displacement of fragile communities. I was, I too was at the Housing Summit in Salem on Thursday. I stayed for the entire, for the entire part of it. I wish my colleagues had heard what some of the legislators, legislators were talking about in the tail end of that. I thought it was very informative. But a great discussion, really, about the vulnerability of, of overall populations, how we're going to, how we're going to accommodate that, and the unaffordability aspect of the housing in the Portland metro region is just significant. And I certainly don't want to add to the problem by displacing more people and causing rents to go up even higher because of some mass investment uncalled for, to some degree, in areas, and, and areas where it should be called for, we're short on funding. It just doesn't seem to be, make any sense to me. That's what I have for today.
All right, great. You know, on the 285 million for McLaughlin Boulevard, I very much question how we would spend that money. You're absolutely right. I mean, first thing, to put light rail down McLaughlin Boulevard would require a vote of the people. That would be a big lift, and not a campaign I'm going to be working on. And 285 million wouldn't pay for light rail down McLaughlin. But really, you're, you're right in the fact that we need to, if this, if there's any transit changes, we need to be ahead of them. We need a plan to reduce displacement. Now, on another subject, which is similar to yours and similar to yours, I just wanted to mention that, that last, last night, we had a hospital authority meeting. Hospital Authority we created in 2017. It, it existed prior to that, but was brought back in 2017 to bring funding opportunities. Actually, it doesn't cost the taxpayers anything, but the county is kind of a gateway to access to funds. So we, the first project was Willamette View, which over $100 million was borrowed to do that project through our bonding authority that the county has. Now, again, it did not, it was of no consequence to the voters. We have no risk at all. Then after that, we did Mary's Woods. You know, like you said, the senior population in Clackamas County is huge, and there's a lot of reinvestment in, in these facilities. So we did Mary's Woods, which was close to $100 million also. And last night, we reviewed another one, and I'm not going to tell you who it is, because we haven't done it yet, but it's 85 million. So nearly $300 million worth of senior facility investments have occurred in Clackamas County since 2017. That's, that's a lot. And also, what I think is really important, is the economic benefit of all that money being spent here, is all the jobs created, that, I mean, and the restaurants and stuff. I know that Willamette View had to close their restaurant for quite a while and find other mechanisms to feed people. But anyway, this, I'm really happy that the hospital authority was created, and now we're looking at a land authority, which is basically taking lands that may have been polluted and under, we would have an authority, which we wouldn't actually be part of. It's a board outside of us, so there's no risk to the county. Those lands would be cleaned up and jobs would be recreated there. I also want to mention that there was a conference in Sun River that it was surprising to see a slide pop up with Ken's picture on it. I've got a picture of the slide. I wish I could have, I had thought of this earlier, I could have given to you, but Ken was identified as, and I believe this is the, it's the top 10 elected officials in, in Oregon who have mentioned tourism. And he was the top one. Oh, you got it. Oh, great. He was the top one. And, and then they had a slide from his webpage, which mentions tourism on it, too. There it is. And that's actually the county's webpage, right?
Yes.
Anyway, that was kind of funny to see that, that everyone at the conference who, who was at the tourism conference was quite shocked.
So was I when I heard about it. But I appreciate it.
Oh, I'm not surprised.
Hard to get a word out of Commissioner Humberson edgewise, so it's hard to fathom that, that you would be talking about it so much.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, other than a cross-laminated timber. Well, with that, thank you for attending today, and we're adjourned.